Nicole, the Monday, August 22nd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting to order. Will all please rise for the national -- or Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Amy Seid, thank you. All right. First item tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next is the approval of the prior commission minutes. Do I have any changes? Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Woodke is not able to be in attendance this evening, but he did contact me with several revisions that he would suggest to the unapproved minutes. The first one can be found on page two. It is the second to the last paragraph and the second to the last sentence in that paragraph. He would like that sentence reworded to read. Woodke said he is concerned about approving these variances as the code amendment has not yet been approved by the council. The second revision is on page five, under Members' Reports, and it is the first sentence. He would like that sentence revised to read. Woodke said he noticed the parks are heavy traffic now by users of augmented reality video games and would like to encourage users and parents of kids to be safe and also know and be respectful of public property and private property rights.
Any other change requests?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm in Epstein. All right. First public hearing tonight is the Prairie Bluffs Senior Living. It's a request for a guide plan change from low-density residential and office to high-density residential on 4.74 acres, a planned unit development concept review on 4.74 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 4.74 acres, zoning district change from rural and office to RM-2.5 on 4.74 acres, a site plan review on 4.74 acres, preliminary plat of six lots into one lot and one outlot on 4.74 acres. Will the proponent of the project please come forward? State your name and spell for city record, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Link Wilson from Cos. Wilson Architects. That's L-I-N-K-W-I-L-S-O-N, Cos. Wilson, K-A-S, and then my last name.
I think it's Welcome Back.
Oh, thank you very much. I'd also like just to introduce the entire team. Ben Delwich, architect from our office, Albert Miller, my client, and also the owner of six other senior living projects that we've all been the Architect of Record, and then Mark Kiverstein, also part of the development team. It's -- I do have a show. There we go. I do think it's important just to -- I think there's a couple new faces here on the Planning Commission. We have been here before. Most of this project was previously approved, but in the last six months, my client was able to ascertain the final site on this complex series of properties that I'll describe. But I think Albert's history is fairly important. In the last decade, his group has developed six properties in the Twin Cities, three of them grounds up. This one happens to be in Shoreview, right on the North Oaks property. Two other grounds-up properties, such as the one that we'll discuss this evening, and then three rehabilitated buildings that are serving perhaps more of an affordable market throughout the Twin Cities. But I think that that's important because they have a 10-year track record in the Twin Cities alone, outside the Twin Cities, about a 35-year track record, on maintaining quality senior living projects, and that is all that they own throughout the United States and a few overseas. I'll go to the next slide. North is to our right as we look at the screen, and what we're really talking about tonight is the -- at the top of the screen in red, the westernmost property, which is -- was for sale by Tom Robertson. And so this is a change from what you previously approved. Tom Robertson is very vociferously seeking a buyer for this property. We were concerned as a development team that this project may go to a national, I'll just call it, restaurant vendor. There had been a request by us to -- we sign off on a very tall pylon sign on our property that caused concern, and so Albert and his team made Tom Robertson an offer to purchase that project or that parcel. So that kind of changed the project that your planning commission did approve. I'll also say that when we look at all of these various parcels on site, it makes my head spin. I can't keep track of each one of these individual properties that we're trying to combine into one. But this is what was approved previously. This was strictly an assisted living property, and we had been here a couple of times, and I think that those of you on the board all made some extremely good points. The project over time improved from the first time that we came to see you. From the second, was it perfect? No. But this is one of those rare opportunities as an architect. Now I get a third chance to look at it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Cos, I just want to clarify that my term started April 1st, and so at that March meeting, I decided to sit in the audience. So I'm not unfamiliar with this project, and I just wanted to clarify that, that I am up to speed.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that because I'm going to try to limit my time here to five minutes because I know we've got a full agenda. So this is what was approved, and you can see the Robertson property up in the upper-right corner. So this gave us an opportunity to make a change, but really, from the southern side of the site to what it was to now, there are some improvements. We were able to take the south piece of that original building that was approved and slide it a little bit closer to 169, slide it a little bit further away from the neighbors there on Normandy Crest. We also were able to study the market. We got some market research data. We added decks to the original proposal. So I think that you'll see a little more variegation in that architecture, a little more animation. I think it's a little more lively building, still 75% Class A materials, brick, stone. So it's -- I think it's a really rich facade, and it's still a really nice sound barrier to that 169 entrance ramp going south. On the Robertson property, which is in the top-right portion, we were able to connect via skyway to a more independent senior building. Now, when I say independent living or a younger senior, we're now going from an average age of 86 in the south building to an average age of probably 80 in the northern building. So that is our young senior who will live in this campus. But it gives, by connecting the buildings, it provides two things. One, that senior who is 80 years old who moves in can age in place, can then walk across the skyway and partake in all the services that are part of the southern building, which are still all there from our original proposal. But we have a devil of a bunch of utilities that are running in that drive, as well as city vehicles that need to service, and I don't have a pointer here, so I'm going to say the bottom-right corner of that site plan where there are city generators that are there on standby to pump the water retention off of 169. So we wanted to be able to allow city vehicles to always be able to get there, but also keep, it's very important, I think, to the neighborhood, and we've had several neighborhood meetings, to keep all the entrances to this building on the 169 side. So we were able to maintain that with this current design. I think the next slide just says a ton. I'm going to go back. Upper-left corner of this diagram, we see Normandy Crest moving to the southwest. This next slide is we're up on Normandy Crest, we're looking towards 169 into West Bloomington off in the horizon, and our campus is sitting along kind of the top three-quarters of that sheet of paper that's up there. And so we tried real hard as architects to just blend this building into the neighborhood, and I think our team did a very, very good job. Are we taller than some of the homes in the neighborhood? Yes, we are, but not a lot higher than, for instance, you see the kind of pinkish house in the left side. That's a three-story home. The majority of our building is three stories. We do have in the independent building a four-story component. And this is -- this is another image just a little bit further west from Lee Drive. And again, it's very, very difficult to see our building that is creating a sound barrier to 169. And then to the right, you'll see just other images as you're going down Hennepin Town Road. This is a site section. The top one is near Pioneer Trail. The bottom one is, as we move away from Pioneer Trail, moving south down Hennepin Town Road. You can see that we are taller than neighboring buildings, taller than the neighboring twin homes that are across the street. But again, if you look at the bottom one, in that black, we're not a lot higher, and we're a considerable distance from the nearest home. We're really only near six homes in the neighborhood. Everybody else then backs away up that hill. Top image is what was previously approved as we're looking southeast down Hennepin Town Road, and then the bottom is what we're proposing today. So that would be the entrance, the intersection of Normandy Crest and Hennepin Town Road. We would enter to the left. So you can see that we are three stories. At that location, we do expose the garage. We're getting into the garage at the far-left side of that image. Top image is what was previously approved, three stories. You can see that we're exposing to a four-story parking structure at the north side, and then you'll see the bottom slide where we are three stories contiguous in the south building, and then we do have a four-story component that you'll see in the bottom right, but we drop the ends of that building down to three stories as we get near Hennepin Town Road. I don't want to spend a lot of time with this. We can return to it. The green is three stories. The blue is four. This is a lot of math on the right-hand side of this that shows that we have an average-grade plane that is below what is allowed for multifamily. But again, I want to clarify, we are an age-restricted senior building with assisted services. We're not multifamily in that, you know, there won't be people out changing their oil in the parking lot. We can come back to this slide if there's questions. And I think lastly, and I'll leave it here, are there examples in Eden Prairie of multifamily or senior adjacent to single-family homes? Yes, there are. There are three examples shown here. There's a fourth that I'm the Architect of Record for, and that's Silvercrest Assisted Living. It's very much the same population on Flying Cloud Drive, the Summit Place, which is 235 units of townhomes, assisted living, independent living. So there are examples of this. I don't think that we're blazing trails or asking for anything that isn't already approved in the city. The last slide, and I think we can just answer these questions, I think anytime you have a complex site like this, we're going to be asking for waivers. Part of those waivers are the zoning code here is multifamily. There's only one city I know of in the metropolitan area that has a senior housing zoning ordinance, that's St. Paul. All they did was they just took their multifamily and then they multiplied everything by three. So it's always difficult when we look at -- the only thing we can look at and compare ourselves to is multifamily, but again, we don't generate the noise of multifamily. We don't generate the traffic of multifamily. We have a traffic study that approves that out. So I think with this, I can just answer any questions at a later time, and I'll let time for questions or city presentation.
All right, thank you. Do we have any initial questions from the commission?
Mr. Cos, can we go back to that slide where you're showing the four stories, please? I believe it's the blue.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that back up on the screen.
I think it's one more before that. There we go.
Oh, okay.
Can you tell me approximately, since I don't have the plan I have down here, but what is the size of that that's going to be at four stories? Give me some kind of an idea of what I'm seeing. So hard for me to read on here.
From a square footage standpoint?
No, just ballpark, the length of that, right.
I'm going to rely on Ben.
I'm not meaning to catch you off guard.
No, no, that's okay, and that's -- Ben's feverishly looking over the plan with the scale. Hundred feet long.
A hundred feet at four stories.
Correct. And then, and that comprises eight apartment units there.
Okay, that's the difference from the --
On that four-story, and some even have -- we've had this debate on the team. Well, why are those eight units so important? Those eight units are important because you're going to have years where you have a little bit of profit, you're going to have years where you may have more profit. We'll get into the discussion of affordability, which I maintain there's a practical affordability that Albert and his team provide when an older adult has lived there for eight or 10 years, they run out of assets, and we turn to elderly waiver in order to support that. We're not asking for any public subsidy. So those eight units that are up there, that 100 feet of housing is sometimes a difference every year between profit and loss, but it's also that difference in practical affordability that we can provide to the citizens of Eden Prairie and West Bloomington.
So if it was all three stories, it would definitely cost you eight units.
Absolutely.
Okay. Just for my clarification.
Thank you.
Any other initial questions? Go to -- we have a planner's report? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated previously, the request before you this evening is for a comp plan amendment to re-guide the property from office and low-density residential to high-density residential, as well as a rezoning to comply with that request to re-guide for the high-density residential. In addition, as the proponent stated, there are several waivers that are requested, waivers to address density on the site, building height on the site. The underlying, the proposed underlying zoning district of high-density residential has a maximum height of 45 feet. The request before you this evening is for approximately 50 feet, nine inches. The density that is requested is also a waiver or an increase, as well as the site area. Those two performance standards, of course, go hand-in-hand with one another. Because the site is a senior living facility, there is a request to reduce the parking that is provided on-site as the population that will live in, would live in this project doesn't necessarily have the same parking needs as a market-rate apartment building does. As you can see from the elevations that were provided, there were some modifications to the aesthetics of the building from the first time the planning commission reviewed this. There's some changes in the materials. In order to still comply with that 75%, 25% requirement, this building does that. They've also added some amenities, such as additional pitched roofs and some balconies as well. The site has also been modified to include other amenities. As you recall, when the planning commission reviewed this request previously, there was some discussion about gathering areas for the residents, whether that's inside or outside the building, walking paths and the like. So as you can see, those modifications have been made to this plan as well, and there's a loop system that provides for pedestrian opportunities around the building. There's pergolas to allow for bird watching and other activities and the like. When the planning commission reviewed this previously, there was some discussion about the affordability element that was proposed as a part of this project. The proponent is proposing to include affordability, and in your staff report, there is discussion about affordability and senior housing in relation to the city's comprehensive plan policies. So the city council will take up that issue and discuss the affordability a bit further when they hold their public hearing on this item. So assuming that affordability gets built into the overall project, the development agreement would include specific language to address the type and the amount of affordability that would be required as a part of the project. Comprehensive plan policy does have some discussion about, in the event of a PUD request for increased density, that increased affordability is appropriate. So city council will have that discussion at their review. On the table this evening, there are two communications from adjacent properties. Those are provided on Goldenrod. The city received two emails from nearby residents that wanted, for the record, their views to be shared on the project. Both of those correspondents indicate an opposition to the project for the reasons that you can read in the emails, primarily with regard to traffic and density of the proposed project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Staff is recommending approval of the development, subject to the conditions and information outlined in the staff report.
Are there any new waivers? Are these the same waivers that were approved the first time this came around?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, some of the waivers have been modified. I can say that the previous request included a waiver for a wetland setback. That waiver has been eliminated due to the redesign. Of course, the parking count has changed, so the waiver on that particular item has changed, and the density has been reduced originally. The density was to allow an increase to, I believe it was 34.1, if I remember correctly. The request now is at 29.1 units per acre. Of course, the building height is a new waiver because they've added the four-story element over the northern portion of the site. And some of the setbacks may be a little bit different, but there were parking and building setbacks the first time around, but based on the reconfiguration of the proposed building, some of those measurements are a bit different, but similar in nature.
So same general waivers with the exception of the height?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay. And wetland setback, okay, great. All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak in favor or in opposition to this project, please step forward if you could, state your name and spell your name for the record, please.
Tom Waller, 10335 Normandy Crest. I'm representing the Board of Directors for the Creek Knolls Homeowners Association. Our townhomes are a block and a half from the proposed site for the Prairie Bluffs Senior Living Project. Our board has several concerns that I would like to voice tonight. First, there are 64 outdoor parking spaces planned for 138 units. These spots would need to accommodate employees of the property, including administration, general staff, nursing staff, aides, kitchen staff, server, physical occupation, speech therapists, volunteers, and family members. Obviously, 64 spaces will not meet those needs. Our board members discussed the fact that there is no public parking allowed on Pioneer Trail, Hennepin Town Road, or Tuscany Way, meaning that the spillover traffic will be forced to park along the residential streets of Normandy Crest, Lee Road, Franlil Road, and Fawn's Way. This would have a negative impact on the neighborhood residential streets. The board members also believe that the residents of Eden Prairie should have the right to rely on the zoning ordinance when they purchase their home. These waivers being requested for the height of the building, the limited setbacks, the increased density, and the detrimental, will have a detrimental impact aesthetically on our neighborhood. We also noted that we are in close proximity to US 169 and already have extensive traffic along Hennepin Town Road, particularly morning and evening. Our streets will not accommodate this high-density project. Lastly, we are environmentally concerned at the high number of trees that will be removed for this development. We hope that you will seriously reflect on these concerns, and when you're making decisions, affect those that are living in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and just go through all the public comments, and then we can try to summarize what questions we have, and we'll ask Mr. Wilson to address them for us. Okay. Thank you.
We live right across the street from the project. I have just a couple of questions mainly. There was going to be a setback of the property at the beginning. It was approximately 28 feet from the curb or the property line toward 169. Link did say that he moved it back some. I'd like to know what that distance is. And also, they're adding 22 units, and I think if I heard it correctly, it's going to be 50 feet high. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have the question then. If the three-story is 45 feet, how can -- you're going to get short people in that top area there? I mean, I don't understand exactly how that can be. So at any rate, that, those are my questions. The setback and the four-story, the height of it, is it actually going to be 50 feet? So, thank you.
Great, we'll get those addressed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Annette O'Connor, and I'm at 10444 Fawn's Way, about two blocks from the project. I've brought along with me tonight people in the area, obviously sent me emails, 100% opposed to the project in its entirety. So I don't know who wants these, but I'll be happy to share them. Our objections consist of the zoning change from low-density to office to high-density residential, the height waiver, a four-story building, even the three-story building is, we feel, is too high. The setback waivers from Hennepin Town Road, if I understand the project, it's going to be 11.7 feet from the curb. We would have a building structure going up, if I'm understanding the project correct. If anybody would like to see what that physically looks like, you need to go to Edina, where the Southdale Library is, on York Avenue, where there was a senior high-rise about 15 stories high, and the city approved a second building of about six stories high practically in the street on York Avenue. It is just totally, you know, from a site standpoint, it's just not correct. The parking, now I took the time to talk to the director over at the summit. Now, they have more units, but they have more parking, and she said the parking over there, not on a regular basis, but a lot of times, is an absolute nightmare because they have people coming and going all the time. They get 35 deliveries of FedEx and UPS on a weekly basis, and they have therapy people coming and so forth. She said, "We never have enough parking." Now, obviously, that building has a stoplight in and out of that project. We're not going to have a stoplight. I mean, it would just be ridiculous because of that curve there. It's just, you know, the added traffic is absolutely huge. I don't know, I did send a notice to several, okay, I did send a notice to several of the planning people who gave me their emails, and I asked them to drive to the site because you get a different perspective when you're standing on the corner of Normandy Crest and Hennepin Town Road, and the beautiful trees that are there, and the elevation, and now you're going to put a three-story building up there. Maybe the only building is that high, but it's going to look as bad as Windsor Plaza. It's just totally out of context. The tree replacement, the required tree replacement for that kind of a property is 1,457. Let me say that number again, 1,457, and they're asking it to be only 43 caliber inches. I mean, that's just, you know, the right-turn lane, I mean, I'm glad that the last piece of property did get acquired, but that does allow them for the right-turn lane, but I'm told by the city that that would only be done when -- I'm told by the city that that would only be done when funding was found for it or evidenced. So, that's just, you know, if you live there, you know what it would be like to come and go. The staff report tells you of several other projects, like the summit, Martin Blue, Lincoln Park, and similar projects that are like, this project's being proposed, but the difference is, nothing else of any of these projects came after residential. This is the only project that I know of, and I've lived in this city for thirty years, where we have residential, and then you plunk a big, to me, it's a commercial building. It might be, you know, assisted living, but it's still commercial. It's there for profit. It's not there for, you know, anything else. They wouldn't build it if they weren't going to make profit. Secondly, more remarks. And it's going to hover over those properties there. I gave, I'm going to give you the emails, told you that. No one that I talked to or sent me an email is really opposed to senior living. We're not opposed to senior living at all. It's just of the magnitude of this project going on this small piece of land. If it were two stories high and kind of meshed in with the trees, nobody would be objecting to it, but it's, you know, you have to consider, you know, and lastly, I would like to remind you planners that you planners and the people in City Hall don't make up the city. The people in the city and that have been residents here and paying property taxes, that's what makes up the city. And it's a, it'd be, like I said, it'd be a good project if we're smaller. And remind you as planners, you have no legal obligation under law to approve this project because of all the variances and waivers they are asking for. So, just remember that. So, who would I give these to?
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment?
Yes.
Just to clarify one point. We are all, we're all residents and volunteers.
But you're not sitting up having a project either. It's not going to affect you personally. Not going to affect you personally. That's the difference, you know?
Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Eric Barton, E-R-I-C-B-A-R-T-O-N. I live on 9902 Lee Drive. The back of my house would face this development, and I would see it out of every living room, every room that we occupied during the course of the day, and most of my bedrooms. I want to address a few things that have been said here. First one, which really struck me in the presentation that the architect was making, was the statement that this is being placed in a neighborhood of three-story housings, or three-story houses. There are no three-story houses in this neighborhood. My house sold as a two-story house with a walkout basement. I'm sure that my neighbors' houses sold as two-story houses with walkout basements. To say that based on an aerial photo, which is showing backyards of this, parts of this neighborhood, when you can see three sets of windows, sometimes on that lower story, short windows, not fully exposed, that we now have three-story housing is disingenuous. And I think it shows something about the position that they find themselves in, that they have to claim that this is a three-story house. If that is the case, if we qualify as a three-story house, because I have three stories of windows on a walkout basement, then I would argue that we account this development as, how many rows of windows do we see? And I think it does not do them any favors in terms of trying to make a scale that's comparable with our neighborhood. However, that's not the primary thing I wanted to bring up when I came up here to speak, when I planned to speak tonight. My concern is the setback. This corner at Hennepin Town Road and Pioneer Trail is the gateway to our neighborhood. It is the way most of our friends, most of our family, our guests, and prospective residents of this area come in. This is the gateway for our neighborhood and the townhomes and the whole neighborhood to the south. If you're coming from the highway, you're not driving down the Franlough Road to come in, where it's nice and pretty. You're coming in down Hennepin Town Road, which right now is a beautiful place. But the first thing you see as you drive in, you make that left turn, is you're going to see on your left-hand side, a four-story building. This is the new property, their northern property, which is what they're coming to for variance, this four-story building. Now, this four-story building, in order to get the height that they want, they're asking for a variance, but they're also asking for a setback variance. According to my understanding, this building is going to have a corner twelve point seven feet from the road. Now, just to get a feel for what twelve point seven feet is, Tim, would you raise your hand? I don't think, Tim, I think Tim is further than twelve point seven feet from where I am standing right now, based on my count of steps up to this podium. Do you know in Eden Prairie, you have an ordinance that a fire pit has to be twenty-five feet away from a building? You're going to have that. You're saying that in Eden Prairie, it's okay to have a fire, a four-story building twenty-five, or twelve and a half feet from a road, or twelve point seven feet from a road, but you want double that to have a small fire pit away from a residential structure? That kind of gives you a scale for the difference between what they're asking for and what you're asking the rest of the city to live by. Now, the other thing to think about is, why is a tall building next to a road a problem? As it affects the feel of a community, it affects, you know, this is not going to fall on the road. People aren't going to maybe not hit it with a car, but it affects the feel. It affects the walkability. It affects the nature of a community, of a neighborhood. Now, can think about other tall buildings in Eden Prairie. I mean, we're not sitting on top of a handful, or more than a handful, of four-story buildings. This is not a community where there are multiple four-story buildings everywhere you look. They're around, but now let's think about some of the examples of four-story buildings, which this commission has undoubtedly approved. So, there's a seniors facility that's around the, by the mall, by Eden Prairie Mall. That one is very tall, relatively speaking, but think about the setback. There is a huge parking lot dividing that from the mall road. And then think of the neighborhood. That is in a neighborhood that's a mall. So, there's not a residential neighborhood right next to it. There's not people's homes right next to it. It's across the street from a mall. So, and it has a huge setback. It's commensurate with its height. Now, let's think about the senior living facility on Flying Cloud Drive. Again, that is a sizable structure. It is very large. It has high-peak roofs. I think it was, I counted four stories on the way over. It's a tall building. But again, think about the parking lot that divides that building from the road, and think about the type of neighborhood that's in. That is across the street from retail. It's across the street from Aldi, and Office Depot, and Michael's, right? It's not across the street from a neighborhood. It's not living in a neighborhood. On your way out tonight, drive by the Optum Facility that's across from St. Andrews. That building is actually tall, and it's fairly close to the road, but you know what? It's close to the road at a few corners. The rest of the building is significantly setback, and what kind of neighborhood is that in? That's on Technology Drive. People don't have houses on that. That is an industrial area. That is across from MTS, the water treatment facility, St. Andrews. Those are the type of places that are there. It's not people's homes. And it's not a residential neighborhood where you want the feel to be walkable, where you want people to feel okay having their kids run out. No, you're not going to have kids, want kids running on the sidewalks, but they can ride their bikes. There's families in this area. This is not, does not match that. Now, think about also, this corner, this high, this huge four-story corner that's right on the corner, with a narrow setback, smaller than my living room, that's where you're going to have a turn lane? You're going to have cars turning right and left? You're going to have changing in navigation and traffic right in this corner? How does, that is not a safety issue now. Now, let's consider also the feel of some buildings that are tall and right next to the road. Okay? So, the Windsor Plaza Office Building, across from the mall, on the other side, that building is huge. You can see that building from, you can see that building from most anywhere in Eden Prairie where you can get to a high spot. It dwarfs everything around it. If you were driving, if you were walking by that building, how does that feel, having a giant building leaning over you? It's not comfortable. It's not a conducive place to be as someone at a human, at a person's scale. So, I'd ask, when you consider this, to think about how this request for variance feels to the neighborhood, how it changes the character of not only of this development, but of the neighborhood around it. The previous development they were looking at was an L-shaped, kind of a bracket-shaped building, where it was close to Hennepin Town Road on the south end, but angled away at the north end. That allowed that building to have size, but minimize the contact along the road. That building would feel very different than a building that follows the road the whole way. Well, now with their acquisition of this northern property, they've taken that building, added a skyway, and moved another building that's even closer to the road. So, now instead of a building that falls away from the road, you have a building that comes and meets the road at the beginning and the end. And my bet is that when your human brain looks at that building, you're not going to say, "Oh, look at this face away from the road. That makes the building feel smaller." They're going to say, "The beginning, the building begins here, ends here. That's a big building." Excuse me, I was taking my notes. So, that's what I wanted to say, and I would urge the commission to reject the plan as it is, based on the height variances that are being requested and the setback variances. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tim Beutel, T-I-M-B-E-U-T-E-L-L, 9890 Lee Drive. My wife and I have lived in that area, which is adjacent to Normandy Crest, and I'm a neighbor of Eric's on the side. Our yard and our upper-level house windows face right in the direction of what was the proposal for the, for the senior building. And we've been here since the whole area was developed. Twenty-six years ago, twenty-seven years ago, that whole area was farmland, and it was being cut up into, for housing development. We were number six house in the area, I think it was, and then we've been there ever since, and several neighbors behind me have been there the same. So, we've seen the things that can change. We know how things can happen with planning and with development, especially in Eden Prairie. When we moved in, Eden Prairie had nineteen thousand people, but there's sixty-two thousand now. So, we watched this city grow, and we're happy to be here. The one word I want to leave with the commissioners is the word squeeze, because this whole thing, and I appreciate what architects do, that's their job. They take all these things with these pieces of land, and somebody's put this together and try to fit something in there that maybe make money for a purchaser or a developer, but the whole thing looks to me like we, our neighbors and myself, are going to solve a problem that we didn't create. And that's this idea of this sliver of land, which was cut out of a way that the city wanted to have a frontage road on the 169, on the eastern edge of Eden Prairie, with 169 plus the neighborhood, and have an exit and entrance. With our, with the squeeze that that corner and the high density, my objection is the fact it doesn't fit. It's too big. The original proposal, which was about six months ago, it seems like that would have been a better, it looked better than this one particularly, I object to, and I know I'm not alone with it. And I appreciate your consideration on not accepting this, a next proposal. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Steve Moehn, S-D-E-V-E-M-O-H-N, and I live at 9812 Lee Drive. I like the idea of senior housing at that spot, but I think it's just too much in a small area. When I looked at the report that came here and the comparable properties, drove by them or looked them up on Google Earth, none of them are in residential areas. They're all in industrial, commercial, or major retail areas, like Bouca, right by Eden Prairie Center, Home Goods, or the Water Tower area. And while there's a Walgreens across Pioneer Trail, and then there's a Fifteen-Firth Burn, this is residential area. So, I would think, since this is the most residential area of any multifamily projects they were talking about, it should have the lowest density. But if you look at the density it has, at twenty-nine units per acre, three of the seven comparable projects listed in the report were less dense. And then, at point eight four, eight four parking spots per unit, counting the underground and the above-ground ones, two of the five developments had more parking per unit. And given this is residential and limited parking all around, like was mentioned earlier, that just doesn't seem right. There are setbacks, variances on all three sides of the project, and also one for height. It's a difficult property, there's no question about it. I mean, this land was created when Hennepin Town Road was put in, and everything was broken up, and the property owners at that time were compensated for it. And that's why it's a challenging property, and that's why it's a relatively inexpensive property. I mean, two of the parcels sold in 2014 for fifteen, about fifteen hundred dollars and twenty-five hundred dollars. And so, with these limitations and the cheapness of the land, I'm an investment guy and understand that the developer wants to maximize the profits and stuff, but with, the land's cheap for a reason. It's because there's limitations, and there's got to be a feasible way to make some project work that isn't too big for this area. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at this time? Mr. Wilson, would you mind coming back up? See if we can work through some of these questions.
I've got a lot of notes.
All right, would you like to, if you'd like to start addressing them, I'll just kind of check them off?
Sure, sure. You know, I kind of want to work a little bit backwards, and maybe while it's fresh in everybody's mind. First of all, this is not cheap land for sale today. The last piece of property to be acquired is absolutely being purchased at way above market value, because we want to be able to control what goes there. We're concerned about some of the other potential buyers. So, this land is absolutely not cheap. But I also want to kind of step back a little bit to, I hate to bore you, with 1940s, 1950s, we had baby boomers who were just being born. In every neighborhood in the United States, there was an elementary school being built, and it was built for need. Today, those baby boomers, they're my parents, are getting close to seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five years old. We're getting very, very close. And so, I don't look at this as my client making money. They're trying to provide a service to seniors who live in this community. Now, they may not be represented this evening. They may not even be able to be here tonight, but they live here in this community, and they deserve an opportunity to stay in this community. And so, I just want to make that point, because it's something that I think all of us are extremely passionate about. I'll jump back now to the very beginning, and there was a statement that there is not enough parking, that the staff would park outside. That is not true. In all of these facilities, staff park inside. And we'll have fifteen to eighteen staff who will be there during the day. And believe me, keeping good staff, many of you are business owners, keeping good people right now is very hard to do, and providing them a heated, shaded parking stall underground is a great way to keep your employees. So, those people park below. And frankly, we have more underground parking than we'll ever need. We have memory care in this building. Most people do not drive, absolutely. So, we have more underground parking than we know what to do with in all of the facilities. We have people parking boats underneath, people leasing stalls. The folks who do, you'll go down below and see a beautiful Mercedes-Benz that was bought in the 1980s, and it's been there for three years, it's collecting dust. So, we have more than enough parking. Now, if this was strictly a multifamily apartment building, absolutely, I agree, we don't have enough parking, but these are quite elderly folks who live here. I understand the, also the concern that, hey, during Christmas, Thanksgiving, Mother's Day, there are going to be people parking in my driveway. Absolutely not true. We have retail that's very close across the street in all of our properties that we've done for Albert's Group. We do, we do an agreement with the companies that are not open on Christmas, and we ran a valet service, and it's very, very successful. So, I think that's something you can monitor. That's something that we absolutely agree to. Environmental concerns, there are a lot of trees on those, on that site, because it's essentially been abandoned for a long time. We have a very robust landscape plan. We have, I think our landscape architect has done a marvelous job and put as many trees as we can. If you'd like us to add a few trees, I mean, we'll work with staff. If staff feels there are additional opportunities for trees, we'll work with staff in that, in that regard. Setbacks, and I may have, I guess I'd like to go back to the overall to the overall site plan to show these specific setbacks. Because I think there's maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding here. And Ben, I may ask Ben Delwich to come up and talk about these close proximities. Now, one of the questions from the gentleman who lives across the street, and that was a fabulous question, thank you. How far, because we did have a neighborhood meeting. I'm just wondering if, maybe I'm going to go over here to the cursor so everybody at home can see this.
Okay.
So this is answering one question. How far since that neighborhood meeting did we move this portion back? The answer to that question is, we moved back ten feet. And we're as absolutely close as we can get to that 169 setback. We still want to be able to get a lawn mower around the building. But we have moved the building as close to the 169 setback. And that is one of the variances that we're asking because we want to be close to 169. So we've gotten as far as we can away from this. And then your other question was, how tall is the three-story building at this point? It's thirty-eight feet high. So I think that answers both of your questions. So the portion that's tall is just right here. We are over thirty feet away from the curb at this location. Ben?
A little over south side, the curb at the top, northern portion.
Right here?
The northern portion, closest portion up there. That is thirty feet right there.
So we're thirty feet from the curb line. That is the closest location that we are to the curb. But we, this is though where we're asking, the property line there is at that twelve-foot.
Twelve point seven feet.
But that is our closest point. And we are at that location, three stories high, not four stories high. But we're still thirty feet away from the curb.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Could you clarify what you just said there? Right at that point, it's three stories, but then?
Correct. This location right here, if everybody can see on the screen, I'm kind of moving the cursor around, I can see it across the room. So this, this whole area right here.
And how many, how many feet are we talking there? As far as the length, the lengths are?
It's one apartment unit, it's thirty-six feet.
About thirty-six feet, and then it's a hundred feet at four story.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Just want to clarify for me.
So I'm moving down the list. And then, I think I'll just come back to the podium. And Ms. O'Connor had stated that Summit Place, which I'm the architect of record for, they don't have enough surface parking. We have about the same amount of surface parking in our project as Summit Place. Summit Place has two-hundred-and-thirty-five apartment units. They also have nearly an Olympic-sized swimming pool, five thousand square feet of just anaerobic fitness equipment, another fitness studio. The Minnesota Vikings used to come to the Whirlpool for therapy after surgery. And all of that fitness is open to anybody who's a senior citizen. So yes, there's a lot of traffic at Summit Place that we're not going to have. They also have physical therapy there. We don't have physical therapy here. So there are some huge differences. One, in just the quantity of people, but also the type of services that are provided at Summit Place. The zoning in itself, we have a very good traffic study that states that if this site is developed as single-family homes, you could do twin home, you could do a small twin home development and office, it would generate more traffic than what we are proposing today. If we just let the zoning alone.
My name is Ben Delwich with Cos. Wilson Architects. The traffic study that came back was done on a comparable of what the land is zoned for currently, which the southernmost half is office. The northernmost half is low residential. And I believe we, the zoning yielded about fifteen single-family residences and I want to say a sixty thousand square foot office, but I, it might have been slightly less. That will produce less traffic during peak hours, slightly over, as an overall period, but not during those peak times. That was what the traffic study came back as.
So I'm just working down my list. We are asking again for a reduction in the tree caliper because we just can't meet it with the amount of trees. That we will cut down, but any development, and I promise you, this site will be developed. These are active sellers. Those trees will come down with any development. I apologize to Mr. Barton for stating that a two-story with a walkout was comparable. There are some three-story elements though to the neighborhood that I feel that that is true. And if I'm disingenuous, I apologize. Could I just show the screen just to clarify?
Sure.
Okay. So I was referring to the pink house that has a walkout. And if I'm disingenuous, I apologize. I do think I clarified that at the nearest location that we are thirty feet from the curb. And I think that that's an important clarification to make. I do think that a picture says a thousand words. And I'm going to shut up here. When we look at these images, the words sound scary, even when I sat there. Sounds scary. What we're doing is highly dense. When we look at the images on the screen, I'm not seeing a project that looks like it is cumbersome to the single-family neighborhood. I'm partial, but I'm going to let the image speak for itself because I think it's very important to see these images. I think that's all the comments that I have. But I can stand for any questions and clarifications that you may request.
That's just a question to start. Did you consider, with this new addition, did you consider just continuing the three-story? As previously approved?
We looked at a lot of different options for this site. I'd like, I'd like to just return to that site plan because the four-story element is just in the top, the top of the site. This project right now is hitting the sweet spot for the amount of staff, the mix of independent living, with assisted, with memory care, and the type of services. Remember, we have a kitchen that's open from 6:30 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. every day. Activity director, activity spaces. This number that we are proposing is hitting in the sweet spot for the number of staff that would be there. But we looked at a lot of different configurations and we really felt that this did make a good gateway to the neighborhood. It is across the street from retail. And we felt that it was, it was the best use.
Follow-up questions? I have a few questions for city staff as well.
Did I understand that there was a neighborhood meeting that you hosted? Could you tell us a little bit about the attendance and the general nature of that? Questions, concerns that maybe came out of the neighborhood meeting?
We did send, we did send a list of attendees to, into one of the planners. Fourteen people there? Well, there are some of, I guess I'd like to have some of the attendees who were there. I see some of them, they could probably speak to that, perhaps a little bit better than I could.
Okay, well, just in general though, were there any comments that they made that you could or did take into consideration when making your proposal?
Yes. One of them was, and again, I'd like to return to the site plan. The bottom left-hand corner, you can see where the three-story building has a shift back towards 169. Previous to that meeting, that was just one big long bar. And so, that was a comment that was made, hey, what can you do? And so, you know, we just went back and said, all right, how close can we get to the 169 property line and still then maintain the property? And we took that into consideration and pulled it back. Ben, do you have any other thoughts or comments from the neighborhood meeting?
No, that was a micro point. And actually, we had it offset originally towards the road, your intention is to break the road which is possible aesthetically. So since the neighborhood meeting, that has actually shifted.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilson? Thanks. Few questions for city staff. Are you, could you tell us a little bit about the right turn lane and what the plans are? And if you're comfortable with the design as is and fitting that right turn lane in at some point?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we, this project is proposing, or is proposing to provide the right-of-way and build the sidewalk at the location where it would fit with a right turn lane. Grade out the boulevard so that the right turn lane could be added at some point in the future. The reason it's not getting added now is it's, in order to make that right turn lane, we have to, we'd also have to revise the signal. Probably at least two mast arms, maybe more. So didn't feel that was probably appropriate for the developer to carry that cost. So it'll be done by the city at some point when it's budgeted, which we haven't, we haven't looked at the budget year. But it's something, we have, we have money every year for miscellaneous projects so it might fit into something like that. But I don't have a timing for it yet.
From your perspective, was there any other concerns that you saw with additional traffic adding this addition to the original plan?
Are you referring to the traffic numbers?
Yes.
No, that the traffic study they provided showed, as was mentioned, there's a, if the, if the site was developed per the existing zoning with an office use and single-family use, there is a, the peak hour has less traffic with this proposal, but it has more daily traffic. But either numbers aren't significant. There's four hundred daily trips. I think it was a little over four hundred. It was three hundred fifty-five with the office and single-family. So I mean, that's, that road can obviously handle an additional four hundred trips. The right turn lane is something that I think would, would help the operation at the intersection. So that people that want to make a right turn can make one without a significant amount of delay, waiting for the signal to turn red, or to turn green.
How are those miscellaneous projects prioritized?
There, things come up that we don't know about. That's usually what, that's usually what that money's used for. Things that we didn't prioritize or have on any list. So things that just come up. Retaining wall that may, that may, we've done it, used it before where retaining wall might need some repair. We don't have that budgeted, so we repair the retaining wall. We've used it for signal re-timing, signal modifications. When we did a lot of flashing arrows conversion, we used that money for that projects. So things like that that come up that we don't really have an identified project for.
Do you think that right, should this be built, do you think that right turn lane would help with traffic?
We'd have to see how much, we'd have to kind of figure out how much it's going to cost. But it's probably more than our year's budget. So we'd have to probably save up for it.
Mr. Wilson?
Commissioners, we have that in our plan and we have that in our budget. So originally, our civil engineer had drawn that turn lane in. And I know the city would probably, you know, like to build it because you can build it to city standards, although we had planned to build that turn lane with city standards. And we had a budget set aside at fifty thousand dollars. We would be willing to either work with the city to, you know, if you had a line item of seventy-two or what have you. But we're getting somewhat of a wholesale price because we're building it into batuminous and concrete work that we're, you know, our subcontractors are doing. But originally, we had that on the table to have that as part of this construction project. So we offer that on the table to make that a condition.
Yes, please go forward.
So I had the privilege, along with some of my neighbors, to attend the neighborhood meeting that we had, that they held earlier, where they shared the initial plans. And they did shift the southern end back. But at that meeting, they weren't showing anything that was four stories either. And so, since the meeting, we got the shift on the setback on the southern end. But now we have eight more apartments added to the four-story section, or the three-story section to the north. My expectation is they probably had some estimate of profitability before that meeting. And I'm not sure why, what changed forced them to have an extra eight apartments that they need. And one they talked about is staffing and everything. I would remind the committee, the commission here, that they had a plan that had a kitchen and all these amenities when they had the southern building alone. So the, granted, more people, you need things larger. And I don't know the interior details of the building. They haven't showed it. Are they going to two kitchens? Or are they going to a larger kitchen? There are two dining rooms or a larger dining room. But I can bet that two kitchens cost less, or cost more than making an existing kitchen larger. So there's this profitability argument. And I'm not saying people shouldn't make money with the land that they buy. Because it is an investment, we understand that. But it doesn't seem to quite make sense. When they showed at the community meeting, they didn't have the four-story. When they were profitable before they purchased the northern property, but all of a sudden, they need all this space. And there, and also was a very interesting comment about the importance of care for senior citizens in the community. I, my aunt is disabled and she lives in a facility very much like this. And it's in a residential community, but it's a two-story building or with underground parking and a setback. My great-aunt lives in a building very much like this. And it was a fantastic thing for her. I have friends and family who are older and who have reached that point in life where they don't want to take care of their own place. I don't think this is necessarily, I can't speak for everyone. I can't necessarily think that this is an inappropriate use for Eden Prairie. And it's not a bad thing to have. But I can't say it's inappropriate use for this land. But it's just too big. That northern plot just got really big. And they're claiming profitability. And they're playing on your heartstrings for, well, think of the older people who live in our community. And I think that, again, they were profitable before when they just had the southern property. And it worked well when they just had the southern property. Thank you.
Questions for?
Can I start off with a few questions?
Absolutely.
Regarding the traffic study, most of the traffic study is devoted to vehicular movements. Could I have a comment from staff on whether there was any thought given to pedestrian movements going across the intersection? If this population, being aged, will walk across to the Walgreens, fill a prescription or something like that? I counted about six lanes of traffic on Pioneer Trail. And I don't know what the timing is of the pedestrian crosswalk. Besides the level of service for vehicular traffic, would there need to be an adjustment to the timing of the pedestrian crosswalk for safety of the elderly? And if so, would that affect the level of safety?
Yes, we would, that signal is operated by MINDOT. But we would, on many situations where we do have, there may be seniors living in an area, we do adjust that timing on the pedestrian crossing to allow them more time to cross. In this case, I don't know, the median isn't really large. So it's not really a refuge area. So we'd have to probably have a fairly long walk phase. But that could certainly be accommodated.
Without substantially altering the findings of the traffic report?
Right, yeah. It's just a matter of adjusting the signal, the minimum walk time for the signal.
Okay. All right, thank you. Surprisingly, one of the topics we had when we approved this project before was the status of the exception. The triangular lot along Headup and Town Road, near the R-section of the residential street. It's a triangular parcel about sixty feet by a hundred and forty feet or so. And I see that it's still not on their preliminary plat and yet they're grading and providing site improvements upon that parcel. What's the status of that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, after the commission reviewed this request back in December and March and asked that that triangular MINDOT piece be included in the project, city staff, through the city attorney's office and planning staff and engineering staff, reached out to MINDOT to inquire about the status of that property. That excess right-of-way, MINDOT was comfortable with conveying that property. It's approximately a quarter of an acre, I believe, conveying that property to the city. So the city does have ownership of that property. So as you'll see in your staff report, while the property is not proposed to be included in the plat because the city would retain ownership of that, there is language that talks about the improvements that are planned across that right-of-way would require an encroachment agreement. And that is something that the city's attorney would draft, should we get to that point, would draft that encroachment agreement to allow those amenities to be placed within that right-of-way, and would also address certainly the installation and the maintenance of those, to ensure that that would be handled by the developer or the project proponent, and would not be the responsibility of the city.
So, we wouldn't have liability?
Mr. Chair, madam, or Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is correct.
Thank you. Lastly, on my list of questions, before we start general discussion, would be the existing tree height. There's been a lot of talk about the building height, but when the trees get taken down, we're going to have a loss of tree height. Those are fairly mature trees there, driven the site a number of times, but in terms of the impact of loss of shadowing, and the comparative nature of a building of the nature of the proposal versus the existing tree height, it can either staff or actually the applicant comment, if you've looked at or measured the existing tree height, to be able to offer such comparison.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm not aware of any specific heights that have been measured, but just driving the site, you can kind of tell that some of those larger trees do have a pretty significant height. There are a few of them that are in the right-of-way area that will be saved, but the majority of the larger ones would come down as planned.
Thank you.
Could I ask Mr. Wilson a question, if I could, please? One thing that I'm looking at is tree replacement. Now, when you drop from 1,457, I walked this property. I spent a lot of time on this property over the last few days, looking at it. So, I know what you're saying, as far as there's a lot of underbrush, it's every, a lot of overgrowth, I get it. But there are those, the big trees, you don't get them back.
Right.
And you're going on to 43 inches from 1,457. I do know that you're pumping up the landscape, and I understand that, though, you know, as far as, is there any, any more inches we can get out of that outside of six, I mean...
I think there is, and I, and I think that we're willing to work with staff either between now and council, or as, as, just a recommendation by you that, you know, you want to see a 20% increase, we're, we'll just continue to work with staff to either get larger trees or find locations for more. So, I think that that, we're, we're very comfortable with that being a condition of, of an approval this evening.
I had one other question I just want to address, too. Going back to this 100-foot area, that's going to be four stories, again, I walked that property.
Right.
I know exactly what neighbors are saying there, as far as, I stood across that street. I envisioned in my mind, and as far as what they're going to be looking at, as far as the height of it. If that came down to three stories across instead of four right there, is that put it, this situation to a no-go totally from your end?
I, I don't want to speak for my client.
Again, I'm not putting you on the spot, I just...
We'd need to do, you know, some, some thinking, but I, I know that we're going to have, at city council, if we're fortunate enough to get there, a discussion about affordability. And, and so, how, how do we weigh those two things against, against each other? So, we're, we're in between a rock and a hard place in trying to provide a practical affordability for those people who spend down their assets, and then 75% Class A materials, you know, on the, on the exterior. But we, we just have to do, you know, some, some hard thinking about it. But, you know, my, my client and this team, we've, we've taken a risk because we felt that there would be, I don't want to call it a 24-hour fast food location across from what you all approve, but we didn't want to take that risk, and, and there's a cost, obviously, to us doing that. I, but I also want to state that there was a question about, and I think it was Commissioner Farr, regarding people walking to Walgreens. The, the building does have, have a van, it does take people out three times a day. Most pharmaceuticals are delivered to the building, you know, but anyway.
Good thing.
Thank you very much.
Questions, comments from commissioners?
I have one comment. At our last discussion with you all, I know that affordability was an issue for us, for folks, and I had learned about the program that you referred to, for folks who find that they can't continue to afford to live there, and the, the program that is available. And I would hate to see that go, frankly. I really want the opportunity for folks who've moved and found community there. And that's a new thing that I, I've been thinking about the last few minutes, is that there is a new community that is going to come together because of a program like this and, and a facility like this. There is no question that, that that is an important element of the lifespan that folks will spend there. And I'm actually encouraged by what you said earlier in the presentation on that point, so I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Well, I'll make a comment or two, just from my own perspective and, and listening to it. First off, I appreciate the strong response here, the neighbors, everybody showing up. It's nice, most of the time, we echo in here because nobody's here, so it's good that you care. It's also tough and an emotional impact when some development in the city impacts your life. And as one gentleman said, he's lived there for 26 years, and this property's been empty. And you get pretty used to the property being empty. Unfortunately, that property's owned by somebody, and, you know, the city has developed, Julie, what, there's a couple hundred acres left in Eden Prairie that aren't developed, something like that?
Roughly.
And so, everybody's looking for every possible place, because the good news is we live in a great community, and everybody wants to be here. So, we're looking to, to put things in places that maybe aren't as ideal as they might be. And, and then there's the economic side of that, is the economics have to work to be able to do that. So, there's, there's a huge balance, and it, it does impact people, and we, we understand and appreciate that. Secondly, I've just gone through a search for senior housing for my father-in-law, and, and learned at the two-year waiting lists that are out there for independent living in a senior housing facility, and, and the, the strong need for senior housing, and, and as we all like to say, we'd like Eden Prairie to be a community where you can grow up here and, and live your entire life here. So, I think there's some appreciation for that. And lastly, what, what sits in my mind is, what's the alternative? You know, you know, there's the devil you know and the devil you don't know. And obviously, this development, to some of you, is the devil. And, and yet, what's the alternative, and what's going to happen? What could be there, what could be the next development that comes, comes in to fill that property? And we don't know what that is. You can imagine good, and you can imagine bad. So, that's the things that we're weighing here, I think, on the commission. And I just wanted to maybe, I think I'm the senior member here tonight, so I wanted to kind of represent that we do care about, about the neighbors, we do care about the community. As I said, we're all volunteers here, we're, we do this to give back to the community. And, and, and there are no easy decisions on a development like this.
Thank you. I'll go ahead. Okay. Is the public hearing still open?
Still open.
Okay, that's fine. Come on up, please. Just state your name and spell for the record, please.
Erin Flod, E-R-I-N-F-L-O-O-D. I live at 9878 Lee Drive. And I have a question about the traffic. We keep talking about this turn lane and the stoplight. What about the traffic coming off of Normandy Crest for the people who live there? How are they going to make a left-hand turn? Are you going to put in a four-way stop sign there? Isn't that too close to the stoplight down, down the road? Are you going to put in a stoplight? What are the city requirements for the distance between stoplights? Also, you had mentioned the four-story that you were at, standing in the neighbors' yards. The perspectives that he's showing of the three-story house, or now, now that we've specified it's a two-story house with a walkout, those perspectives are an aerial, slightly aerial perspective, they're from a height. So, if you're standing in my backyard, it doesn't, you don't get that same perspective that it's not showing above the trees or anything.
I think that's what I was pointing across, yeah.
Right. So, those were the two things. But basically, I'm wondering about that stop sign, stoplight at that intersection coming out of their driveway and off of our street.
Thank you. Could city staff speak to that Normandy Crest intersection? What plans would be, or concerns?
Typically, before, we would put a four-way stop in. I mean, I, I don't think a signal would ever be justified there, and a four-way stop may not be justified either. I think with the amount of traffic on the side streets, as well as Hennepin Town Road, I don't think it would be a problem to turn left out of there, or turn right. Occasionally, you have to wait for a car or two, but I, you know, the volumes that are out there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
Commissioner Farr?
There's been a lot of discussion about the, the scale of the building, and I think it's just worthy, just to talk about that just a little bit. I, I did measure, I didn't see in the plans, oddly enough, the length of the building. I tried to measure it myself, and I came up with roughly 750 feet long. I don't know if that can be substantiated or not, but roughly, that's about what the length of the building is. And we talked about height a lot, and I believe that a lot of our discussion will come down to what we call transition. This is, this is a fairly substantial building mass, it, it's tall, but it's very long. And there are techniques that the architect has used to try and minimize the mass by stepping the building in and out, a variety of color, texture, and materials, which I find mostly successful. The 750-foot length is very long, and while there are some comparables in the, in the submittal, and others have pointed to those comparables as well, I don't find those particularly meaningful in this instance, because of the proximity to the road and the residential and other factors we've talked about. So, I'm looking for a, an appropriate buffer to improve the transition, to make the development more palatable to the neighbors. I, I think we do have a significant camaraderie, if you will, between single-family residential and our seniors. I don't think it's a different district, we, I don't think the neighbors should think of it as a foreign zone that is not compatible. That said, it's a large building, and I would go as, as far as to say that the single-family residential area is a premium development than Eden Prairie. And as such, they have mature, premium landscape features in their yards as they approach their neighborhood. And a gesture towards the, the loss of trees on this property might be to enhance certain very key front door features with some very premium landscape features as you approach the development, for a sense of balance on both sides of the road. Again, really put some, some great grade trees, pluck some tall spruce trees, et cetera, you, you know exactly what I'm talking about, some premium landscape effects, so that it looks like a balanced effect when you come in. If, if the buildings were disconnected and not one building 750 feet long, I don't think anybody would know that, because you're driving down the road roughly parallel with the building. And so, your, your ins and outs are very important, and, and your scale and, and character of that, of course. I, I think you may have had an opportunity with the bridge structure between the two buildings, the north and the south, maybe to, and I don't want to, I don't want to play architect up here for you, but, but to have that look something different than the rest of the building, to help at least break up the north and south into two particularly, maybe, different masses, to help in that separation. But I think your most successful design strategy was the stepping down of the roofs on the north building from four stories to three. And while the topic of a four-story building maybe is, is its own subject matter, I think that the step-down effect that you had on both ends of that north building were the most successful things you did with the roofline. And, and I would urge you to consider something like that on the longer building, on the south property, to give it that same variety of skyline. Thank you.
Could, question for the city, the, did you discuss the funding, having the developer fund the right turn lane, and is that a possibility, or something we've done before? Because it sounds like there was, there's really no budget for it, it's not in the horizon, and if it's just potentially budgeted as miscellaneous, it seems like...
Well, we did, we did talk about it earlier. I think once we began to look at it and, and to see how much signal work would have to be done, it might be something we could partner with them on, and, and if they contribute some money, we contribute some money and get it done sooner. We haven't had that discussion with them, but I think that's certainly possible.
And the city could also work with them potentially on looking at the, the tree replacement plan as well, seeing if we could increase that?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners, or maybe I get a sense of what people are thinking, or?
I'll, I'll go ahead and just disclose that I, I did struggle with this over the weekend, for a number of days, and I know this is, project has come before us, before. We did approve it, we had comments, we had concerns before about scale, character, transitions, buffering, and all that back then, and I thought we'd come to terms with it. I'm, I'm satisfied on, on traffic, I believe this is a good use for the land, I believe this is good for Eden Prairie. I really want to be respectful of all the neighbors' comments about their feeling about this development. It's, let's just say it may not be starting off on the right foot, and so, we want to have these people be amazed when it's done. We want you to be a great neighbor to them, and not, not overwhelm them. And I have a feeling that they think you will overwhelm them. So, I, I think that the strategies that, that you can use as an architect, with your landscaper and site design, to bring the human scale up between the development, the building itself and the street, will go very far for your neighbors. I, I will support this project.
Would that support entail, would you want to see something again about the premium landscape, or something that they could just bring to city council potentially?
If, if conditions are warranted, I would, I would add conditions to increase the landscaping from the as-proposed condition, not just in caliber inches, per se, but very strategic landscape features, specifically focusing on the transition between the single-family across the street and the front approach along Hennepin Town Road, between the street and the development.
Someone else can mention the...
I'd like to make a comment, if I could, please. There's two ways of, that I've struggled with this quite a bit over the weekend. On one side, I have a real hard time supporting that four-story. And when I look at 39 people, I believe is the count out there, as far as median, me, neighborhood, it's someone that you have to, you have to listen, you have to listen on it. And having stood and walked that property, and stood across from that property over the weekend, I really cannot see where that four-story is not going to be a problem. That being said, it has to be reemphasized that something, that's not going to stay as is. Something is going to go in there, and I think the neighbors have to understand that, you know, and I think it was brought up pretty well from us, that it is going to get developed. Whether this or something down the road, something is going to go in there. And our job is, what's best option, where everyone can meet ground on it. But I thought it was important for me to bring that out, and I think I'm pretty consistent of what my opposition was throughout this meeting on that fourth floor.
I'd like to ask a question before I give any more comment. Staff, with respect to...
another return here to, to visit about that, or can it be something that is discussed with staff and brought to the discussion with city council?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if the commission were to include that in a motion to direct staff to continue working with the applicant on the landscaping, that's certainly something that could occur and be forwarded to the city council. It certainly is within your purview, if you'd like to see it back, but it is a regular feature, if you will. You'll see in many projects, that there are some minor modifications that are made to plans between planning commission and city council, based on planning commission comment and review.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comment on that, how you feel? Would, would you be interested in having the recommendation read? That would be the, to the work that staff would do, and then would the developer bring some ideas forward in terms of something they would work toward, along the lines of Commissioner Farr's proposal? I just wonder if you're okay with that, or if you would prefer not to do it that way?
I would be okay with that.
Okay. I'm also, from that viewpoint, I would love, like to hear us go forward in that manner, and make our recommendation word, worded in such a way that the commission would not see it again, if, if it in fact passes tonight. And I guess, I, while I think that the fourth-story issue is very sensitive and a problem for people, I think that, given what else is going on with this whole concept, that I would rather see it go forward at this point, the way it has been managed, and, and the way the costs, and the opportunity to do things with, with affordability and so forth, that will be there if this is approved by the city council. I'd like to go ahead with it in its current form, rather than go back to three stories.
Why, I appreciate the neighbors' concerns and the thoughtful feedback. These are difficult decisions. I'm in agreement, really, with Commissioner Farr's comments, that I think it is a quality development. I think it's needed in the city. The senior housing is needed. And I'd be supportive of moving forward, I think with the, the caveat that the right turn lane, as well as the, the buffer, or the tree replacement size component, is built in, working with the neighbors. I think that there's a, as long as there's a collaborative process to make sure that they're in agreement with what's being put forward, and be able to have some, some feedback or comment on making that successful. I would be supportive of moving forward.
I think I've made my overall comments, or perception of the, the process fairly clear. The thing that weighs, that pushes me to the side of supporting the project is the alternative. I actually think this is a pretty darn good alternative, compared to what you might see in the future. So, I would support the project.
I guess I would echo the same. It was a difficult decision prior. It's a difficult decision tonight, but just thinking about the alternatives, I mean, there's a right to develop the land, so.
All right.
I guess I will entertain a motion then.
Sure. Mr. Chair, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, want to take a stab at it?
Let me take a stab at it?
Some language.
Would you? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval for the guide plan change from low-density residential and office to high-density residential on 4.74 acres. Plan unit development concept review on 4.74 acres. Plan unit development district review with waivers on 4.74 acres. Zoning district change from rural and office to RM-2.5 on 4.74 acres. Site plan review on 4.74 acres, and preliminary plat of six lots into one lot, and one outlot on 4.74 acres. Based on the plans stamped dated August 17, 2016, and information included in the staff report dated August 17, 2016, with the additional recommendation that the city continue discussions with the goal of enhancing the landscaping, including potentially strategic landscaping to blend with the neighborhood, and continue discussions on ways to facilitate the right turn lane in the shortest possible time.
I second that. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Project passes. We're going to recess for five minutes.
Think we're ready to get going again. Next up for public hearings, we have variance number 2016-08. Location 11,000 West 78th Street. Request to allow variance for proposed exterior screening and improvements to an existing building that would exceed the maximum building height permitted by city code. Would the proponent of the project please step forward and state your name, and tell us about your project, please? And if you couldn't, spell for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name is Steve Kleinemann with SKD Architects, and I'm the architect working on this Cambria project. We'll just start here. This is where we'd like to end up, in, in the end here. This project has actually been going on since 2007. The building itself has been plagued with issues with the existing windows, and we've had a lot of degradation, both in the window systems, and also, there used to be a wooden fence screen around the mechanical equipment that was removed a number of years ago. And the owner wanted to beautify the building, to bring it up to more of, you know, they view themselves as a style company, and want to improve the building as well. And what we're really trying to do is to integrate the, the mechanical screening, and also to create more of, of a cap to the building, with some interest in relief, to make it a more interesting structure, that's more consistent with, we think, in the neighborhood, as well as their needs. We're also addressing a number of functional needs, both in the building and on the exterior, that have been, that have been occurring. This is a general site plan, a partial site plan of the project. What I want to call to your attention, is there's a lot of grade chains across this site. And if you look, north being up, if you look just north of the building, that's probably one of the highest points of the property. It, it moves, as you go east to the right, grade drops significantly across the parking lot. It also drops from north to south, probably, I can't remember the exact numbers, but around 13 feet or so. And it also, you know, the parking lot itself is very steep, so it was a very difficult project to work with. The southwestern corner is what really determines the low point where the, where the loading dock is, is what determines the low point on the site. What we did is took a look at the existing building. The photographs that are along the right side of the sheet are the existing building itself. What's kind of unique about the building is that the main entrance, the east side, is a glass curtain wall system, where the other three sides, northwest and south, it's kind of a ribbon, glass and brick. It was a desire by the owner to add stone to the building, much more stone, to break up the glass, and to provide, you can see on like the, the upper right-hand corner on the east side, the mechanical equipment, how it extends above the roof there. And they wanted to beautify the building, and we felt it was important to integrate the screening in with the, with the buildings, with the building exterior. So, when you look at the sides on the left, on the left elevations, the west elevation's on the top left, you can see more of the ribbon cut. Now, there, the windows have already been replaced. We just recently replaced the northwest and south side, that style. We added a stone band on top of the brick, and we've added more stone underneath. And we've also improved and created a western entrance, which we had to do before we could really address the eastern side, which is where a lot of the work is. And you can see that middle photograph right there, again, that mechanical equipment extends above the roof. Now, you know, with the, based on the report itself, the mechanical equipment is, is just under 10 feet tall, above the existing portion. And when you, when you look at the other buildings that are around here, both on the northern side of 494, and also, there are several buildings that are farther east on 78th, a number of these buildings, most of these, well, these buildings are taller than this building will be. And one thing to notice, the photos on the left side, if you look at the tops of those roofs, you'll see an element that projects, that's very predominant, and that's the, the screening for the mechanical equipment. And we felt, again, that it probably makes more sense for us in a smaller building to integrate that in with the exterior of the, of the building itself, creating texture and relief. The buildings on the right were, several of them were along the north side of 78, or excuse me, the south side of West 78th Street. All of these buildings are in very close proximity to this existing building. This is the exterior, as we proposed it. If you look at the lower elevation, that's the west elevation, and you can see the loading dock there on the corner, that's really where the measurement of height is taken from. It's actually not, it is the lowest point, but it's, it's sloped down just as a ramp, almost, to be able to get trucks in there to drop off vehicles. The height is actually about four feet higher than that. But our goals are to create a finished top to the building, improve the appearance of it, where we've added this sunscreen effect on the top of the building, as well as a texture. We had to be very careful structurally. There are some issues about adding weight, so this is a lightweight aluminum system that we're adding to the top of the building, where we can do it effectively, and get an interesting texture and appearance. This is the north and south side. We have taken away the existing building with that glass curtain wall, also has a large sloped atrium. That atrium slopes down right to the front doors entering into the building, and they get ice buildup in the front, which is awful. We've taken all the slope blazing away, and have developed a stepped system of clear-story windows in the atrium. This is a shot, it's Google Maps, and what we did is, we wanted to help you visualize what we were planning to do. So, we took a 3D model of what we're proposing. We dropped it onto Google Maps, so I apologize, grades aren't exactly perfect, but I should be able to make that go. And that's not, oop, that wasn't the button. I think I've got to go back here.
Oh, you see it right down there?
On the entire building, trying to help here. I guess, I can at least show you these. So... It's too bad I couldn't give you a walkthrough. We added the trees and everything to give you a scale of what was going. We added the trees and everything to give you a scale of what was going on. But you can see how we've developed kind of the sunscreen material, and it's kind of a louvered material that wraps around the building. A portion of that is six feet above the existing roof line, where we felt we could get by, given the distances of screening out the sunscreen, or the equipment. But we have elements that pop up to 10. And when you look from like the north side of 494 and some of those other photographs, you can really see that equipment popping out, and those pop-ups are really intended to take care of that. And this is just a view from the northwest corner of the building, showing how that works and feels. That's the low side. It's not exactly like that in terms of grade, it's just how our model came out, but I think you get the idea of what we're trying to do here and what we're trying to propose. We feel this is very much in character with other buildings that are, that have been improved. We feel that this is a great improvement, I'll stop right there, to the overall, what was there, and we feel that we very tastefully have dealt with the challenges for the building itself. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have additional questions from the Commission for Mr. Kleinemann? Okay. If we could go to the Planner's Report?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, the request before you this evening is for a variance to exceed the 40-foot height requirement of the Commercial Regional Services District. So this property received a variance back, and I believe it was 1984, to exceed that 40-foot height and go to a height of 44 feet. So essentially, you are being, this evening you are requested to approve an additional 10 feet. So when you see it in print in your memo and it talks about 14 feet, that four feet was already approved in 1984. They're asking for another 10 feet beyond that. As Mr. Kleinemann said, the property does have mechanical equipment on its roof that right now is not being screened. The exterior improvements to the site would allow for that to be screened, as is required by the city code. So the additional 10 feet of building height to screen that mechanical equipment, which is roughly nine and a half feet tall, they're not seeking a variance that is excessive in order to meet that requirement of screening. Staff is recommending approval of the variance, subject to the information in your report, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments from the Commission?
Wonderful, aesthetically, very pleasing.
That's good. Can I ask you one question, for me?
Sure.
No, my understanding is that we'll, it'll, the equipment on the roof will be totally thin, screened by it?
It'll be screened, yes.
Good job.
I bet it was an interesting Commission meeting in 1984, to go 40, 44 feet in Eden Prairie. I agree, I think it looks great.
All right, great, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to, we move to approve the final order 2016-08 to grant...
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Was there any comment from the public?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the whole hearing.
I'll move the approval of final order 2016-08 to grant a 14-foot building height variance based on information included in the staff report dated August 17, 2016, and the building height shall not exceed 54 feet, as depicted on the site plans prepared by SKD Architects, Inc., dated 7/22/16.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your project passes, good luck.
All right, it looks like we have a Planner's Report, a Code Amendment Flood Plane, a request to recommend to the City Council that the city code be amended to meet the standards required for participation in the National Flood Protection Program, as outlined in the Code of Federal Regulations.
Who would like to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, though it is a Planner's Report, the city engineer is going to give it this evening.
Brad Stilson. I don't think I can speak as eloquently as Julie does, but I'll try. The city received in early May a letter from FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, indicating that new flood plane maps were being developed or were approved and will be, come effect, will be effective in March, or November 4th of this year. As part of that, FEMA has asked each city in Hennepin County, this affects all cities within Hennepin County, to update their zoning ordinance, I'm sorry, flood plane management regulations and code, to meet the federal requirements. So they basically gave us a draft, or a guide, a guided flood plane management ordinance with very few options to change. It's basically a mandated ordinance that is very similar to what we had before, but does have a few variances or a few differences from what it was a few years ago. So in order for citizens in Eden Prairie to continue to buy federal discounted insurance through FEMA, the city needs to adopt a new flood plane management ordinance. So that's why we're here tonight. I do have, I do have the maps, if we're, if you're interested in seeing them. What really happened is the maps have now been digitized with aerial, with aerial background. So previously, the maps were very difficult to interpret, and it was loan, mortgage companies and so forth had a very difficult time understanding where the flood plane was. These maps have, have been, as I mentioned, digitized with an aerial background, so mortgage companies can see exactly where their structures are relative to the properties. Most areas did not change with the Eden Prairie. The Riley-Purgatory-Bluff Creek Watershed District and the Minnesota River Watershed District flood boundaries have not changed, they just were digitized. But Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, FEMA has accepted their new model information, so that is now, so there's some areas that have been expanded, the flood plane has been expanded, and other places it's been taken away. There are three, this ordinance allows for three flood districts, a floodway, a flood fringe, and then just general flood plane. Eden Prairie, at this point, has only general flood plane. We don't have a designated floodway or flood fringe areas, which, there's different regulations on each one. So what we'd, what we're asking for tonight is for you, for you to recommend to the City Council to amend the entire chapter regarding flood plane ordinance. As I mentioned, it's, it's a very prescriptive ordinance that FEMA has provided to us, and we've only made a couple changes. And the two changes that we, that I do recall we made were regarding manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. And we don't have, we don't have a mobile home park in town, nor do we have a recreational campground that would typically sometimes be in flood plane areas, so. So those are not in our, in the code. So I'll, if you have any questions or you want to see the maps, I'd certainly be willing to do that as well.
Do you have any question?
I'll wait and see what you want to do about seeing the maps.
Well, maybe we should take some questions and see if it's necessary or not.
Well, I do have one question about the Minnesota River aspect of our flood plane. I happen to have gone on a tour with the Historical Society in July, down into the river valley, where some of the residents still have agricultural land, and you're indicating, from what I think I heard you say, that that requirement, whatever requirements are in code now, stay where they are for the Minnesota River area. Is that what you meant me to hear?
Well, no, this, the, the new flood plane ordinance replaces our, the entire flood plane ordinance we had previously. Although it's very similar, there are some, there are some minor differences.
Okay, there are some minor differences. How will people who are affected by that understand what that involves, or once it's, say, once the City Council has acted and the new station comes?
Well, so do you mean if, they would have the opportunity to buy flood insurance?
Okay.
This, any construction or filling in a wetland, or I'm sorry, in a flood plane needs to be managed through the city, so there needs to be compensatory replacement of that. So if you do fill, you have to replace that volume somewhere else, and that gets managed. Now, if there's existing structures, there are some allowances on either, on how you take them, that structure out of the flood plane, either with fill, or you have, allow the basement to flood, basically. And we don't have a lot of this, but, you know, in some flatter areas of the United States where they actually have flood, I don't know what you'd call them, basically the, the windows open up and they can basically, they flood the basement on purpose, so it doesn't collapse the basements. So they've actually, they actually build gates in the walls of the, of the structures. So.
Questions, sir? We haven't seen the maps yet, but I was just curious, how can we have the Minnesota River on one of our boundaries and not have a floodway or flood fringe?
Well, it's just, FEMA has not recognized, has not designated that. There obviously is a, I mean, the floodway is typically the banks of the river, whereas the flood fringe is the flatter areas adjacent to it, but just, it's not designated. It's, everything in Eden Prairie is designated with a general flood plane district, so. And the one thing I will mention, too, that when they digitize the maps, there are several parcels that, what they did was, the old maps weren't always, the maps didn't even follow the shoreline of lakes, for example, so they corrected some of those things where the flood plane now matches the bank of the lake. And in other areas, like I mentioned with Nine Mile, they actually did a, a study, a modeling, the flood plane, and they actually have elevations and grades and everything that FEMA and Hennepin County have, have accepted. And that, that process will happen with Riley. Riley's doing their modeling right now, it's not complete, but at some point, they will submit that to FEMA, and FEMA will, it takes a long time, there's a lot of quality control that has to go through, that's a long process, but eventually those changes will occur as well. So as, as technology gets better, there's more and more opportunity to get this better. So we, I will also mention that we're going to, there are, I don't know, there's probably, I think it was about 150 properties that were impacted, that either are now in the flood plane that weren't before. Sometimes it, or, and then there's, and some of those are also that were in before, but now the boundaries have changed. Still doesn't mean there's structures in the flood plane, but they will be getting some, we'll be sending out some notices to those people, providing them some maps to show where their, how their property is, where the designation on their property is relative to their structures and so forth, so. Because they'll, this will, will probably prompt several calls from mortgage companies to their lenders, because they'll be now, they'll say, well, you'll need to now purchase flood insurance, so. So this whole process is in order to, to meet the deadline of getting the new, the new flood plane ordinance in place before November 4th, and then November 5th, it'll be, they'll be active.
Are flood plane lines established reactively to flood occurrences or proactively based on future development opportunities upstream?
Well, when they do their modeling, they, they look at land uses, both existing and proposed, and then they, they model based on new rainfall data. I'm sure you've all heard of Atlas 14, which is the new rainfall data that has basically been refined with 50 more years of rainfall data. So those, that information has been updated. So what used to be a 100-year storm or a 1% storm, used to be six inches around here in 24 hours, it's now seven and a half inches in 24 hours. So the modeling has been done to, to look at the existing topography and landscape and impervious areas, and then model that seven and a half inch rainfall. And so that's where Nine Mile has done that, FEMA has accepted that model, and then adjusted her maps accordingly.
If anyone wants to see the maps, are we comfortable?
I don't need to see the maps.
I don't need to see them.
All right, then, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend to the City Council approval of an amendment to the city code to meet the standards requiring, required for participation in National Flood Protection Program, as outlined in the Code of Federal Regulations, based on the information included in the staff report dated August 17, 2016.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Any members' reports tonight? Continuing business. New business.
I just had one question, I don't know if it's new business, but a question for Julie. Is there a discussion going on about senior housing ordinance? Are you looking at doing a senior housing ordinance in Eden Prairie, or?
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, as we'll discuss at our next Planning Commission meeting, the city staff is in the beginning stages of kicking off the comprehensive plan, and as a part of that, our Housing and Community Services Manager is also working on a housing study for the community. So I expect that that conversation will roll itself into that broader picture when we're looking at housing needs for the community out to 2040.
All right, if nothing else, I entertain a motion. To adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.